Six thirty-six, please rise for the vote.
Why do they just?
Deny, deny, nation of America, and to the public, for it to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right, they put it over there. Damn it, I think. Roxanne Tuff's Keegan here.
Tim Curry here.
Mike Wobry here.
Trace Donovan Lawwell out here.
Bonnie Canyon here.
Okay, so we will skip the approval of minutes, we don't have them physically here with us. I do believe draft minutes are available out there for people to approve, right? Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll just table that until the next meeting, which will be the first one in April.
Did you guys approve the ones that you wrote?
No, because we didn't have a copy of them. So with that, we'll move into signature action, so personnel.
Well, I was wondering if it would be possible to add something up real quick.
Yeah.
The appointees, trustee of the trust funds, we have that conversation?
Yes, so, well, I just want to do the signature action items and then after that, because there is some other stuff that needs to be moved up after too.
Sounds good.
So we have two, this is for two new people to come on the fire and EMS department, which So you want to move up number eight?
Yep.
Correct? Okay.
Mainly just the appointee, the trustees of the trust funds, only because I know there's somebody here who is very anxious to get the resolution of that and might have a hard time staying for too long, so.
Well, also, so along with that, so once we do that one, then we're going to discuss, we'll move up our items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Sounds good.
We'll just rearrange those to be with that.
Just get some air.
Okay, so, so while they're signing that, we can go ahead and start with the appointment. So go ahead, Tim, what you want?
So, the trustees of the trust funds, there was John Mullen, won both the one-year and the three-year position, he has decided to take the three-year position. Originally, we were under the impression that the other people who were voted in, who all received one vote, we had to offer it to them first. We called the Secretary of State, who informed us that because John won the position and he's not taking it, it is now considered vacant, so the board can appoint somebody. And I know that the person who kind of heads that committee, if you will, had a suggestion as to somebody she wants.
I'd like to see Chris appointed, Chris made it. She's been my, one of my trustees, because John Mullen is the third one. They've worked well together, I'd like to keep that going.
So you're looking to appoint for one year?
Yeah.
Right? So we'll entertain a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Does she want that position?
Yes.
Good questions. So, Tim made it, Kim and Mike seconded, so any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you're good?
I would have twisted her mind when she said no.
Yeah. So, some, sounds where we're at here for the appointments, I just want to put out there for moderator, and this is not any vote or anything, just letting you know that Jack at the meeting, town meeting, Jack said that he is going to be stepping down this year after twenty years. We did, the board did get someone who'd sent us an interest on that, so that's just kind of where we're at, but until Jack officially resigns, that position is, he still holds that and whatnot, so just.
One moderator position's still open, Eddie's on, that's for the village district.
Oh, well.
I don't think they've given, that's fifteen minute meeting.
So.
He has some interest in that, right?
If I could just, I'm not sure who the person is who put into that position, however, I would just like to speak to the board where they probably would like to bring in the town clerk in that process, only because the process has become very technical now.
Right, well.
With all the parts.
The supervisors, supervisors of the trust, the supervisors?
Checklist, yes.
Checklist, sorry, they're the ones that are going to appoint.
Right, and I, I would just encourage them to have a conversation with the town clerk, because, like I said, there's a lot of technical aspects of it now.
Right, so I just, we, I think Mike and I wanted to get that note, you know, asked and I said, so I forwarded that information along to Jack and Andrea for them to talk about it and discuss, you know, because it really, it's kind of out of our hands, because we don't, but yeah. No, I agree, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. And like I said, what's got, yeah.
Yeah.
Making sure that what's got, like, put that bug out there.
See you later.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
So with that, with that, so we'll go to item fourteen, ambulance, I don't think you were going to speak to this, Jake, this was just to let everybody know that the Middleton ambulance will be out of service, I think it's Tuesday and Wednesday, or Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday of this week?
Uh, yeah, I think it's Wednesday.
Thursday. But we will have an ambulance in town, we are borrowing one from Wakefield, so there is going to be an ambulance available, or this won't be Middleton's, so just wanted to let everybody know that if you see Wakefield's ambulance, that's why, because ours is being, is being serviced or whatever. So number fifteen, fire truck contract.
Just on stuff that's out of service, and I think you're at Wolfboro, maybe.
Yes, and actually, that's right, Jared did say, he did call and tell me that you guys responded to a call in Wolfboro and the tanker truck just lost all power, and so that has been towed.
Mike Lawwell, that's full.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Time to bill them.
Did that break down before they got to the call, or on their way back?
No.
On the way there.
Oh, on the roof.
So that's at Crowe's, 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 Crowe's. So, but you have a contract for us to, for the new truck?
I do, I have a few things, will you?
Okay.
Would that, what's first?
Yeah, fire truck.
You have that. Uh. You have these.
Yep.
This is the way that, should have brought copies for all of you, so.
It's all right, well, we're going to sign one, or whatever, but this is all the terms and conditions.
Yeah, it's pretty kind of straightforward.
Yeah, there's no, as I say, there's just nothing, there's no, oh yeah, there's the price rate, yeah.
Yeah, so five fifteen.
So we're going to do twenty-fourth, and then for the five, yeah, sign off fire.
And just so everybody knows, I do have like, three other quotes that are just, one's within twenty grand, but it doesn't have half the stuff that we wanted, so.
You did your due diligence, we have three quotes.
Bang for the buck, so.
And the time period to get those other ones.
Yeah, I mean, they actually do say on this a hundred and eighty days to give them some lead time, but I think that's a moving way, I should say. And then, I don't know, I took this off the registration of the other trucks, but that's like, I don't know if that's how we're going to title it, that's how all the other trucks are.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Just like that?
Yeah.
So if you guys are good with that, I'll send that in.
Yep, that should be fine, yeah, we would follow that. So, if you get a chance, if we can get a, is this for us, for me? This is for you to send back?
Yeah, I get to send that back, but I'll get a copy, they, they've got a counter-sign it.
Right, I was going to say, so once you get that.
He's already texting me to get it, so.
Right, so once you get that, we'll get a copy back, and so we can keep it in the drawer, so we have it ready, so, okay, so that's good.
Yeah, because we add, add up to climb and please.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll add it once we get it, which won't be for too much, and the next item you had was firehead, by department overhead doors?
Yes, so, there's been a couple of those, I don't know if you give me those, the quotes?
Yeah.
That's right, I did.
So, the big thing was, they're pretty close, one's thirty, one's seventy-six, like two hundred bucks a fire exit. The biggest one, the one that's a little bit more money, is replacing the entire panel, so the insulation value.
Right, I think that's what he said, I think he said.
Versus the other one, it just cut holes in what we're already doing.
Right, so my understanding was, is the thirty-one seventy-six, we weren't getting any insulation, there was nothing, so it was worth it to go with the three thirty, the three thousand three eighty, because the doors are insulated.
All new panel insulated, which is what those are, yeah.
So you're looking for the board to go ahead and approve that, or make a motion, so if somebody wants to make a motion.
See, I can get to the new addition.
Yeah, so you want to go with Martel overhead doors, that's correct?
Yes, correct.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Are you good with that, Kim? Any discussions, anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you go ahead with that one.
Is it one big window across, or is it a couple?
No, it's, it's a couple of.
Like here, no.
Pan, yeah.
He'd paint, paint glass in each door.
Was there, oh, so the other thing was this, the EMS medical storage explanation?
Yes, and I don't, I don't see this to you guys to read, but, uh, he had much preferred to go with the NOCS system, for a little bit more money, overall, I think his seventeen ninety-two is, could be the, the safe and vault. Uh, the, versus the NOCS, which everybody, your administration uses the NOCS, everybody's familiar with that one. We have a medic jumping the truck from Frisbee, he's giving me a code, and he can get in with it, if they've got something serious going on, or, 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 crazy, but that was kind of, and he's familiar with that one, um, Jared, this morning, his fourteen, but he is familiar with that one, so he feels better using it, knows your reliable system before it's come up.
Okay. So another paramedic's code works in this, it's like in a system?
Yeah, so we have two medics, and the other thing it's going to do is separate the drugs out, so, so like, an intermediate, or advanced EMT uses a different, they did not allow to use all sort of paramedics.
Yeah.
So it separates it, so they can't get their hands, they're not technically supposed to be able to get their hands into what the medics need to use, or, the medics can do whatever, they can take any of the, but, uh, but, you know, somebody with a lower skill level is possible to have their hands in there, so it kind of affects that.
Okay. So just a quick question here, Jake, so I see basically, it looks like maybe the biggest difference, and I don't know, because I can't tell what the, what the, um, safe, safe and vault uses, because that looks like, really, it looks like the unit itself is the same amount, is, like, the safe and vault doesn't include, like, the.
Cloud license.
Cloud, cloud license?
Yes.
So we would have to purchase that with the safe and.
Yes.
Anyway, okay, so really, it's, the price is basically the same between, it was a hundred dollars, or maybe a hundred?
I'm not sure the other actually offers the cloud.
Right.
So, I think it just stores it in the system versus, we'll grab it, Jared, keep you at work, and you're working, grab it, take it, because it was.
But, just as I was going to say, and I think if we were looking at it, the unit itself is comparable, it's because the NOCS is offering this license, cloud license.
That would be yearly.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, so he'll need to make sure that gets built into his budget. So what you're looking for us is a motion to go forward with the NOCS.
Yeah.
Company, so look, entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
So we can discuss? Any discussion on it?
No, I like that it's locked down.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So there you go. Did you have anything else, that was the only?
That's all I have.
Okay, that was the only part.
So I'll, yeah, I'll get that contract, send it over to probably proceed from there.
Yeah, that's fine, you can just drop it off at the office or whatever, or if you have any, scan it, email, whatever's easiest for you.
Okay.
Whatever's easiest.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Um, are you good to, if you want to start?
I'm good.
Okay, so the next items, now we'll go back into our regular order, so we are in board positions, so we are technically a new board for the year, we need to, um, do a chair and a vice chair.
I mean, as I said last year, what's got, being the chair for the year, if somebody else wants to be, that's good too.
Okay, so, what do we got?
My only thing, would you be able to record meetings and?
Yes.
Like, to the side and be chair?
Yes.
And I'll nominate him.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Am I recusing myself?
Oh, okay, I'm like, that was quick. So now we need to position a vice chair.
I'm not with it, Roxanne.
It doesn't matter, I'm fine with it, or Tracy, if you want, I'm fine.
I don't mind either.
All right, so, well then, so we'll go ahead and take Bonnie's nomination to have Tracy be as chair, um, someone want to second that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You had a question?
Bonnie.
Bonnie.
You, okay.
But Tracy's the vice.
Tracy is vice chair.
Vice chair.
So with that, I will hand it over to Tim to take over from now.
All right. We are, all right, now we're on the liaisons portion.
Liaison?
What?
We have the paper for the liaison.
That's what I was about to ask.
I have one that's had, still had Scott on it, so I don't.
Yeah, I have one.
That's what I have, so, um.
We have a new one, do we?
We don't have a new one that, well, basically, I think Bonnie took, Bonnie took all of Scott's places, except for.
Them out before I came on.
Right, but I mean, we, we didn't do anything to the liaisons when, before you came on, we just, whoever was second, where are the.
Right, they stepped up.
They stepped up, so that was all that, saying, so.
I mean, the only position was called that I would be looking at changing, would be, I would like to take over the personnel policy, first position.
So we had Trace, yes, because Scott was one, and Trace.
Do you want to go down them all again?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, yeah.
So, is that where you paper?
Yeah.
You can, that's okay. I can chair.
You want to ask Bonnie if she wants budget committee, because I said.
Well, when we get there, we can go through it.
All right, so, police.
Currently, we have.
Currently, Mike, you're first, I'm second.
Yeah.
You good?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So that's.
All right, highway department, Tracy, you're currently one.
Um, wait a minute. Oh, I must have a really old one, okay.
Yeah, Tim.
Yes, I'm good with that, I mean, I'm only going to do.
And we need a new two.
Um.
I'll do the back though.
Okay.
Okay. Fire EMS, Roxanne, I believe you're one.
Yep.
And I'm two.
Hold on.
I'm fine with staying.
I'll give it to you after.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with staying with the police, I mean, EMS, sorry, fire, geez.
All right, budget committee, right now.
I was number one, but if, I know I had talked to Bonnie before, Bonnie, if you want budget committee, I'm okay with that, but.
Are you good with that, Bonnie, sorry, Tim?
All right.
Yeah, okay, but, Mike, I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay, and then we want to be number two, or?
I'll be number two.
All right, I can be number two. Recreation, I wonder if there's anybody who wants to be number one on that one?
Uh, I could probably do that one.
Okay. Um, I was number two, I'll keep that. The school department, um, we don't have, Roxanne, you are now number one.
I can do number two.
All right, Tracy's number two. Conservation commission is Tracy, and it looks like Bonnie, or it was Scott, Bonnie, you want to be?
That's the second Tuesday of the month.
Except Tracy can't make it.
Yeah.
Everybody can, yeah. Are you good with that, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Okay. VBA, I'm one, Mike, you're two.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Planning boards, uh, looks like, Mike, you're number two, looks like there was no number one right now.
I'm number one for planning board.
Okay, so, you go with that?
I'm fine with it.
Good, all right. Stafford Commission, Stafford City Commission, or Stafford County Commission, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, right now, you're number two?
I, I think I was number one.
Who was?
Oh, there is, it says Scott right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so Scott is not, so.
So you want that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, so we need a number two.
Who would like to be the number two on the Stafford County Commission?
I'll do it, okay, Tracy.
Okay, Tracy. All right, legal, I'm number one, and Roxanne, you're number two?
Um, I would put Tracy as number two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joint laws?
That's me.
You're number one, I'm number two. Primex, it looks like Scott was number one.
Uh, Tracy.
Tracy, would you like to take that?
Sure.
And Bonnie, do you want to be?
We've all, just trying to go around, but I know.
Okay, Bonnie's number two. Personnel policy, um, gonna take that, if it's okay with everybody?
Yeah, Tracy is.
Tracy, you'll take number two?
Yep.
Because I think she was on there.
Yes. All right, building code, health officer, Mike, you're number one?
Yeah, I'll continue to be number one.
All right, and Scott was number two, Bonnie, would you like to take number two?
Two.
Good. Uh, see, admin assistant, Tracy, you're number one.
We could ask her, oh, I could ask Kay too, if you were okay with me, are you okay with me? You want somebody else, feel free to speak your mind.
I'm a concentration, do you want somebody other than Tracy at your meeting?
No.
All right.
We go private.
What about you?
All right, administrative clerk, right now.
When did we did administrative assistant, where did we end up?
I thought we did Tracy and me.
Me.
Okay, so, are we good then?
Tracy, are you going to be number two?
I didn't know, honestly, if like, Bonnie could be a backup, just because she has the most availability.
That's a good point, all right, let's do that.
I mean, I'm looking at you.
So, Bonnie, you going to be number two for admin?
For admin?
Yep.
Who's number one?
Yeah.
No, Tracy's number one, my bad.
Okay.
All right, admin clerk, right now you're number one.
I'm fine with that.
And I'm number two. Town trapper, I'm number one, and Bonnie, would you like to be number two for a trapper?
Sure.
And town clerk, I'm number one, and number two is Tracy.
Um, let's put Bonnie number one, because I think.
That's a good idea.
Because she's only got a couple, so, so who was number two?
It was Tracy.
Okay, yeah.
So Bonnie, you want to be number two for town clerk?
No, let her be number one, and let Tracy be number two, because I think Tracy's got.
No, I would like to stay number one for town clerk.
I don't agree with that, but.
Why not?
I just think that Bonnie, she's only got, she's only number one, number for budget and recreation, and, and she has more availability to be in here, so I just think that it gives her someone in the office to be, but that's just my opinion, so. Oh, that's got the wrong name again. Bonnie?
I don't think she'll know why.
All right.
Tim, can you, two, right, that's what we said?
Sure.
Okay, I mean, that's.
What about social media and website?
Oh, yes, um.
Do we have a backup?
No, it's not a position we really had yet, so.
Well, I thought we kind of like all said you would do it.
Right.
Well, I can do it.
It'd be nice to have a backup, though, just because when we're trying to.
Yep.
Lock someone down from a comment, or, we've had a few things where.
So who wants to be backup?
Bad as to what?
Social media.
Social media.
Oh, Bonnie. I have a hard time on my own.
He tapped.
I mean, Bonnie, I mean, I don't. Bonnie, would you want that?
Yeah, seriously.
Tracy.
I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
I mean, I might need a tutorial.
Well, yeah, you, you tap, you're right.
I have what's called instructions.
Oh, awesome, okay.
Kind of sad.
Let me take a pic, I'll take a picture then.
Take a picture.
All right, garbage contracts.
So, yes, so I'll speak to that, so the gentleman from.
Mr. Belanger.
Canela, uh, Sella, which used to be Canard, Mr. Belanger, yes, he reached out to me and said, because our contract is up this year, and he, they're not renewing our contract as such as it's going to be revised.
Mm-huh.
Um, he did, he did, he is going to, he is actually coming to a meeting, I believe in April, and I don't recall off the top of my head which meeting it is, I believe it's going to be either the April fourteenth, I believe it's the April fourteenth meeting, I don't think he could make the April seventh meeting, to kind of come and present, um, what they're going to offer, what they're offering. Um, he did speak to me quickly about doing like the garbage cans, um, they call them the specific cans that their truck can lift and dump into their, um, into the trucks, he said, you know, it's more cost efficient for labor for them and whatnot, however.
For them, or for us?
For them.
Okay.
For that, that's what I said.
That's what I heard.
That's what, because I said, however, um, that would, he said, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, potential.
Purchasing them.
Purchasing, yes, we would have to purchase them, he didn't tell me how much, he didn't say how much they were, I didn't ask, because it was just a quick conversation, because when I initially called him, I didn't realize it was calling about garbage, I thought he was a resident, and so, whatever, um, and he just wanted to make sure, you know, that we, it was on the radar, and actually, the garbage contract was going to be on, on the meeting, but now it, we had a little bit more information to it. He did send an email, um, basically stating that, that they're not going to renew our traditional contract that we have. He did send an email, um, basically stating that, that they're not going to renew our traditional contract that we have because of the costs and stuff like that and whatnot, so he is going to, um, like I said, he is going to be coming and letting us know. But I mean, someone should, we should have somebody on that contract looking at it, um, because we could reach out, I do know that Pete LaChapelle from Waste Management had reached out to Scott back when Scott was on the board, and he wanted to kind of know what-
Well, I can reach out to him.
So-
I know Pete.
Yeah, I know Pete, too, but yes, go ahead, and, um, so we just want to make sure we're getting that situated, because technically, it's like three months, the contract, you have to kind of renew it three months, or you have to be standing like three months before it actually renews, so you have to have to come to all the terms or whatever, but Mr. Belanger knows that that's not going to be the case, because they want to make some changes on the contract and and whatnot, so.
Okay, well, I'll reach out about that.
June of, June of this year.
June thirtieth, right?
Yes, I think it's June of this year, yep, so, so that's that garbage.
Would that be a, a three, five year?
Um, I would think, well, I hear, I would assume it's going to be a five year, that's what we had, but I don't know, it'll be interesting to see what he offers, maybe.
Have we been in Panard Waste Management, who else is there?
Well, it's Casella now, because Panard is, Panard got one of like some, I don't know, um-
Waste Management does those cans.
Yes, yeah, so we can see that, but I think, you know, so one of the other thoughts that came up, and this could be, this is more of a long-term thought process, or like garbage, because garbage costs the town a lot of money, um, is potentially maybe we need, we look at potentially having our own transfer station here in town at some point in time.
Yeah, then that's not something we're going to be able to do this year.
No, 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 not this year, but I'm thinking, I think as we look at this contract, we kind of say, this is kind of what we want to move towards, and so we can kind of work the cons, you know, work them in conjunction.
Uh, it's going to be part of a longer conversation that we're all going to have to have.
Yes, yes, but I mean, I just want to throw it out there as a thought to say-
Absolutely.
Maybe, as we, talking about garbage, that maybe our long-term goal is to have our own transfer station, and, you know, because maybe that will help curb some costs that we're incurring.
And if I remember right, when, um, Waste Management reached out to Scott, they were looking for a price, they wanted to know how much the other guy offered us. And we did not want to tell them.
No, no.
So, betting that's what they're still going to want.
Which at this, at this point, you, we can tell them, I mean, they can look at our budget, see how much we paid anyways, I mean, and that is in, from what Mr. Belanger said, that really has no bearings in kind of going forward in this next contract that we're-
And the difference on that, too, is, um, when you have those particular cans, you-
Can't have anything on the ground, right?
Nope.
Yeah.
Only what fits in there.
But the one good thing about that, I would, well, and and again, we'll wait till he comes in to talk about that, but the one thing is, then every, everybody has their garbage in a can, and there's no, uh, birds, crows picking at garbage, like I saw last week.
Alright, yeah, so what's called, I'll reach out to Pete LaChapelle, and we'll start moving forward with that.
Yeah, and then, like I said, Pete wants to come, but I do know that Mr. Belanger, I believe he's coming, like I said, I believe it's the four fourteen.
Yeah, I actually talked, uh, yeah, what's called, so I guess, last week, what's called, he was calling around trying to get somebody, and he talked to you, he talked to me, he talked to- Alright, um, GSI, or, I'm sorry, MRI, nothing, or, uh, company.
So, we, that, we got approved at town meeting, Kim sent an email, um, I asked her to send a follow-up email to MRI, MST to say that, um, that approved at town meeting, um, we, we would, you know, want to move forward with, um, bringing them in and doing all of that, and doing, uh, the conversion in Q three, which is what they suggested they could do, so we just find, see what paperwork we need to engage with them and get on their schedule to have that happen, I don't know if you heard that from him.
Yes, I have heard that from him, and he is going to get together, um, some more information as to, um, when we, would be a good time to convert over and-
Okay.
And price them.
Well, okay, because we have a person, he gave us-
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I just want, alright, so, yeah, I, because I would like to, if we can get Mr. Contract signed for a price that, that we don't get told, oh, now it's going to be, it's like a little-
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but, yeah, so that's where we are with that.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
The GSI, Matten Software.
Um, Robin has reached out to CAI, CI, CAI, to, and let them know that that went forward, and she's working with them to get that working, to get that brought in and situated. I saw an email, she included us in the email, so.
Did that come, look at our foresters coming doing foot locks, do they, uh, do they use drones?
I don't know, I, I, you can just ask maybe, um, Robin, as to like what they use, kind of thing, to like how long will it take to get up and running. Right, we can ask Robin, you know, we can post that out to them and see.
Probably, I haven't even heard of that, David, it's all satellite.
Right.
Have you ever gone on, like, um-
New Domes or-
I haven't, I saw it the first time here, and I was amazed.
Yeah, you can just go like to Milton, and just like pop up and look at people's backyard.
That's awesome, yeah, I mean, not to do that, but.
I'll ask Robin to see what they say to her, but we'll find out what we read.
Alright, uh, backups for payroll, so this is a conversation that I had with Kim last week, because currently, she doesn't really have a backup for her payroll. I know originally that was supposed to be Robin, but that never really came to fruition, so I think that's a conversation we need to have now, as to what we can do about having her get a backup for her. Whether it's a board member, or whether it's finding time for Robin to be able to do it.
I-
How long do you think it would take for training?
I don't think it's something Robin is interested in, but I, I can ask her, because I don't think she's interested in any of, like, pay, you know, AP payroll, so-
And that's also accounts payable, too, for paying bills.
Right, so in that case, what's called, if Robin's not going to be doing it, then we need the-
Right, we need to-
One of us needs to be able to step in and be trained.
Right, or more than one of us.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, no, but, right, at least one, at least one of us, right, so I think that's kind of what we need to probably look at.
So-
She can't do that, right, she can't cross.
No.
Yeah.
In the meantime-
You can do it.
Before we, before we have the conversation, or, because we're going to have the conversation with Robin anyway, is there anybody who's interested in learning that?
I don't mind learning it, I mean, I'm familiar.
I'm familiar, Tracy and I, can you do an evening class? Okay.
Well, my thought-
Or Saturday, or like-
Yeah.
So my thought, and this could be, you know, off base, but I know that Bonnie has a lot of free time where she can be in the office, so this might be a-
Yeah, she can-
Good thing for her to be able to do.
Yeah.
Bonnie, what do you think?
I know nothing about those programs and stuff, but I mean, I'd be willing to see.
Alright.
It's a step by step, I have it all written out.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, I think if the three of us do it, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, we can at least form one person to get it.
So, alright, you guys will coordinate with Kim to find any time to start training?
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, network issues, Carl.
Oh, wait a minute, what, what, what do you have for, uh, conservation commission?
I have conservation commission.
Conservation, actually.
Sorry, I missed that, yep, conservation commission.
Do we know what that is?
I do, but I'm not telling.
I don't know what it is, what, what is it?
Did you ask for it to be on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, you're right.
Well, it's, I, they, you didn't, it's for their order, um-
It's my day, Kate, it's okay.
Oh, this the-
It's going to be okay.
That's what it was on the wall?
It's our recommendations for replacements on the conservation commission.
Okay.
Yeah, they put me down for three years for full-time member. Carol Beaker down for one year for full-time member, and, and Salida for one year for a alternate. And that's what our recommendations are for. Whether you accept those recommendations, or you-
So, do we have a motion to accept those recommendations?
I will make a motion to accept. Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
You want me to-
I'll second it.
Alright, any discussion?
Who seconded?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, so next thing I have, the ambulance, which we've already talked about, fire truck, we've already talked about.
Yeah.
Fire doors, we already talked about.
Yeah.
Now I have network, issue Carl.
So, I've been kind of going back with Katie, getting, going back and forth with Katie on this, so she had sent the last email she sent, she goes, um, Kyle, so he has a laptop, but she says that Kyle will not be able to access the Avatar over a VPN or via remote access software from the town laptop while at home. He will need to either remote into a different computer that is at the office from his town laptop, or will need to leave his town laptop in the office and remote into it from a home computer. Um, if the plan is for him to use the town laptop while at home, let, we need to let her know what computer in the office he should be logging into for remote access to Avatar.
Okay.
Because that person won't be able to get in at the same time.
So, suggestions, I don't know how that would-
So it's because, what's called, we don't have a server in the office, he has to go to a separate computer, right?
I don't know, I'm not really sure.
His laptop is his computer upstairs, he doesn't have-
Right, well, what I'm saying is, what's called, normally, what's called, when you VPN, you VPN into a server, so we don't have a server, so that's why we need to use his computer. Which means that either we have to stop a computer from the login to at home, which would be-
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that.
Or what's called, he would have to leave that at the office, and then log in from a computer at home, assuming he has one.
So we can't have her use it like in his vehicle while-
Well, he could if he has one to connect to.
Right, we need to either have one to connect to.
So the question, so I guess the question-
He needs like a desktop and a laptop.
Yeah.
That's more money, I'm just saying, right?
Do we have that extra?
Well, so my thought, so my thought is, is how often do you use your conservation computer, Kate?
A lot.
I know. Well, I'm just saying, so I'm just trying to figure out, because then there's, you know, I mean, different times or whatever, but it's what's-
Well, that's the question, I mean, if, are you there at night?
No, because I usually do it from home.
So theoretically, he could log in.
Wait a minute, what do you mean, you log, how do you log in from home?
I do a lot of it at home, and I do a lot of it at, at the town home.
Right, but she's using a separate computer, you're using your computer at home login.
Yeah, but I'm using conservation logins.
Right, but that's what I mean, so what's that, she's using her computers login to our computer.
Uh, she, okay, alright, she's using it as a dummy, yeah, okay.
Right, so she's using it as the network server.
How can I help you?
So does he have to stay logged in here? No, he doesn't, no, he doesn't have a computer here, like, so-
But I'm saying, I don't know how this works, I'm really bad.
What could happen is he, if, Kate, if you're not using it at night, which is something, I'm guessing that's when, you know, it's like he wants it to be a login to, he could log into that computer from, you know, his laptop at home, and access it that way.
We could, we could, alright, so what we could do is maybe do it as a trial basis, see how it works, if it's, if it's, doesn't work, you know, I mean-
And what we could, you know, so we have to schedule times, obviously, to make sure that we're not going at the same time, but-
Yeah, right, so, I mean, not that, but I don't want to pinpoint you to say, oh, I only have access these days, because you shouldn't have to, Kate, you should-
I just, I can't, you know, I'm not working, so I'm just going up when I do it, but, yeah, whatever, whatever works in the town.
Do you-
I'll make that sacrifice.
Do you acr, do you have, um, have access to Avatar?
No.
So how does that work? So does the conservation include-
Yeah, she'd have to be given, that computer would have to be given access.
Right.
I mean, you get access to the, to the Milton, um, is he making changes in Avatar?
Well, he's got-
Or is he just looking at it like, what I do when I go into the tax house?
No, he has, his, he has programs that he can, it interacts with Avatar. So like, he, when he does a building permit, that should generate a transaction to Avatar to pull to get on the, you know, uh, review for the year or whatever, so I'm going to say, I'm going to recommend Tim work on this.
He will access home.
So I will work with Carl and Kate, and we'll see if we can get this situated.
Do you, is your computer at work, um, set up to the, uh, printer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, printer at work.
Well, I mean, yeah, it is up from up there, yeah, yeah, I don't remotely print, that's for sure, yeah, I'm, I'm going to try.
Alright, so, so we'll do that. Alright, Sage fifty renewal. I don't know those.
Yeah, so you can, yeah, it's the renewal for our accounting software, um, Kim got it, and plus, we have to renew, I think we're going to have to renew for the year, I don't necessarily, I don't think you can renew for six months and, because we have to renew until at least we get the new accounting software.
Yeah, it's current plan will expire on April seventh.
So I think we just need to go forward and renew that.
So, what's the short term we can renew it for?
I don't, I just think it's for a year, I get, that's all I got, so I'm going to, um, give them a call.
It was a year subscription, then that's what we'll do. Assuming the board agrees?
Yeah, no, I mean, I would just check Kim and see if you can get, if it's a six, if you can do six months, I would do that, if not, do the year.
Alright, you want to try and go further, sure, it's time for renewal.
Yeah.
In six months, I think it's probably going to be longer, but it might be like eight, but I think you're going to get, they're going to tell you, no, it's going to be annual, but that's just my thought.
Um, it just says, please be reminded that payment must be received by the due date, payments received after that, oh, nevermind, nevermind, I'm good.
Alright, so I believe that's everything we have on our scheduled agenda, do you have something else?
Yeah, well, actually, I want to make, um-
Non-public?
Yeah, to make a motion for a non-public on three twenty-four to seal minutes for five years.
Do you have a second? Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, actually, so seal minutes, you have to do roll call vote, Roxanne, yes?
Roxanne did. Michael Green, yes.
Tom Kirby, yes?
Tracey, yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Sure.
It passed, thank you.
Alright.
Oh, gee.
Now we can open up the public comment. Does anybody have a public comment?
Wait a minute, Bonnie.
Fiorella Jango.
So Roxanne, we can give a little cut back to your time in the office? Now that the changes have happened, because I see your car there quite late a lot of time.
We'll see, I don't know. Good question, good question.
I think it's a relevant question.
We'll see, we'll see.
Alright, Bonnie?
I'm just doing a flashlight Easter egg hunt at the school playground on April twelfth, uh, starting about seven o'clock. Um, we are looking for candy donations.
Where can we drop them off, Bonnie?
I'm going to need to drop them off with Kim, I hope.
Candy, Kim, candy, candy, there you go, Kim.
She's got it.
Both times.
I'm not fired anymore. Thanks, Bonnie.
I'm usually at, um, Old Town Hall on Monday nights, um, we'd like them dropped off by April fourth if possible.
Anybody have anything else?
Planning board appointments.
What, your board appointments?
Planning board.
Planning, did we have any? Oh, Kate, you can get on the list, yes, we actually have a plan, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, I don't know why.
I don't know why.
I know, I know, she did, Kate, so the planning board would like to, the planning board, um, is looking to appoint Kate, sorry, as a full-fledged member of the planning board.
And voting rights and everything.
Yes.
And how does Kate feel about that?
She agreed to it, she wanted to do it.
It's all good.
You're torn.
So I'm going to make a motion-
I'll second that.
For Kate to be appointed onto the planning board.
Did they give you that big book, because when they handed that to me, I was out.
Alright, any discussion?
Well, let's think about it.
So should that be for three years, Kate?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, let's, let's do the three, we'll do it for three years, because we need to look at what other ones on it, because it should be rotated, but I would put you on as three years, we want to, we want to have-
Did you know it was three years?
It doesn't matter, it'll seem like ten.
Kate, 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 alright, let's vote before anybody sees.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Kate, you can't raise your hands.
Thanks, Kate, thanks for reminding me, thank you.
Well, it's hearing, Kate.
In and out, right?
Yep, you were good, no, thank you, Kate, for reminding me, because, oh. I think we're good.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven twenty-four.
Seconds?
I'll second.
Bonnie, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm very, aye, everybody, thank you.
Thanks for coming to the snow.